...nine I is a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures in the Historic Preservation Landmark District. We have some people that have signed up to speak. I'll ask them to keep their comments to three minutes or less. Lauren Capron? Morning, Lauren. We'll need your name and address for the record.
Twenty-five oh-nine North Hudson Avenue. My name is Lauren Capron, and I'm here to speak on behalf of the House at twenty-nine-hundred North Harvey Parkway. The House at twenty-nine-hundred North Harvey Parkway is on the park. The park's being rebuilt. Houses, the, many of the houses, or not all, but most all the houses on Harvey, on the park are the bungalow-style homes. This is a bungalow-style home. I'm not opposed to taking the garage down, but I am opposed to taking that house down. Jefferson Park approved to, to keep this house, not tear this house down on July thirty-one, and the HP Commission, our HP Commission here, has gone out there and looked at that house and does not want that house tore down either. They want that house restored. You've been sitting here talking about restoring, and this is in a bungalow community. If you drive through, I don't know if you all know where Jefferson Park is or not, but if you drive through Jefferson Park and you look at the little red signs, it says it's a bungalow community up there. Jefferson Park has rehabbed six Chodo houses. These houses that we rehabbed were in worse condition than that house right there, and I personally have rehabbed four houses in Jefferson Park. We've built eighteen new bungalow homes in Jefferson Park, and we have offered advice to the people who have this house, and builder who builds our bungalow houses have offered his advice or help to restore this house. So we have suggested a contractor to him. I don't know what else to say. I came here with some people telling me that, that the council pretty much made up its mind. I hope that's not true. I hope that it gives some consideration to this. Across America, I don't know how many of you have been across America and ever took the time to look at some of the bungalow communities, but the prices on bungalow houses in, in, across this nation run from anywhere from five hundred thousand to a million dollars coast to coast. And they just hit two hundred thousand dollars in Jefferson Park. So I'm encouraging you to reconsider or consider to saving this house and let it be rehabbed and let it be part of the, our bungalow community, and I thank you for listening to me.
Thanks, Lauren. Good morning. We'll need your name and address for the record.
My name is Nancy Nagel. I live at five oh-six Northwest Fourteenth Street. I am Vice President of Historic Preservation, and I speak for Historic, Heritage Health Neighborhood. We are concerned about demolition of a home in a historic neighborhood. This property was brought with the knowledge that it was located in a historic district. It is a distressed property, but since its purchase, it has been allowed to deteriorate even further. There has been no effort to save or preserve any of the remaining structure by the owners. We feel that demolition of properties where, that can be renovated, but just because the owners do not want to renovate them, sets a terrible precedent, not only for Jefferson Park Neighborhood, but for all the historic neighborhoods. Heritage Hills and all of the members of that neighborhood strongly encourage the council to deny the request for demolition of this property. It can be renovated, and as others have stated, help from that neighborhood and from other neighborhoods is available for this. So twenty-nine-hundred North Harvey Parkway, we, we strongly encourage deny of request for demolition.
All right. Thank you, Nancy.
Can I ask you a question? Would, do you, if we did deny, and then they weren't willing to renovate, do you think that the market, I mean, would there be people willing to buy it from them and renovate it?
I don't think there would be any doubt that a number of people would buy this property and renovate it.
Okay.
There's no doubt about that, and people in my neighborhood have already discussed that, and we feel strongly that we need to step up in helping that situation. There's no doubt that someone would buy this, or a group would buy this.
Thank you.
Josh Greenhall?
Can I, can I ask Mr. Matherley to speak first?
No, we have to go in the order that we call them up. Thank you, though.
I'll be brief. Good morning, council. Ted and Deborah have asked me to speak on their behalf.
Josh, I'll need you to give your name and address.
Yeah, Josh Greenhall, nineteen-hundred Northwest Expressway.
Okay.
Thank you. I'm a member of the Capital Medical Zoning Improvement Commission for the state, and I'm on the HP Board for that body. I consider, in my position on that board, the same things you guys consider, and I see this kind of thing all the time. And I'd like to speak really to the point that was just raised. It sounds great to have somebody come in and buy these properties and renovate them, but what I've seen so many times in my district is that a buyer comes in and buys such a property, and then it just can't be economically done, and then the can gets kicked down the road, and we end up having to demolish the structure. The goals of, of our district are the same as the goals of Oklahoma City HP, and there are extensive requirements for any structure that is built in the area that is covered by the HP. As the gentleman said before, several new bungalows were built in that district, and, and that was because the old ones couldn't be saved. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Josh. Deborah Richards?
I should decline to speak if I may.
You can decline to speak if you'd like. Jameis Matherley?
Morning.
Morning.
Thank you all very much for the opportunity to come and talk to you. My wife and I are the owners of the property at twenty-nine-hundred North Harvey Parkway.
I will need your name and address for the record.
James Matherley, twenty-nine-hundred North Harvey Parkway.
Okay.
And if the council would like, I have a little information on this house.
Sure.
For the course of time that we've owned the property, as, as previous commenters have pointed out, we have owned the property for two years now, and I, the one thing I would like to point out is that the issue that the council is considering today is not whether or not we want to demolish the house. The city council is considering whether or not, city planning, the city building inspector is determined that this house is dilapidated, and the city council is determining whether or not they're going to certify that dilapidation. This is not something that I'm doing and my wife are doing. This is the city that's determined that the house is dilapidated, and they're asking to certify that. The issue at hand, though, is that this is in a historic preservation neighborhood, and as a consequence of that, this is not a decision that the city should be taking lightly, and I support that. My wife and I both grew up in houses built before the twentieth century, the turn of the twentieth century. We have a deep appreciation for the value of historic homes. But the city council still has a process in place for determining when houses that are dilapidated need to be taken down. This council has determined five houses in Ward Two since two thousand and eleven were dilapidated and certified them for, that were historic, and certified them for demolition. And we support that, the goal of historic preservation, but there is a process in place for dealing with houses when they get to a point where they can no longer be saved. This house, since we bought it in February of two thousand and fourteen, we have invested considerable time and effort into investigating every potential path forward for this house. We've had multiple experts come out and view this house, and this house has been, since it was bought from the previous owner, or the previous owner owned it in nineteen seventy-two, to the comments of several of the neighbors that have sent letters to the council, forty years of deferred maintenance on this house, and it sat empty for three years before we purchased it, which has led it to be in the state that it's in today, as you can see. Two structural engineers have viewed this house and performed detailed inspections of it. The reports, the reports are in front of you right now. Both of them have determined that this house cannot be saved. The Laurent Massanet, one of those structural engineers, met with ourselves and Councilman Shadid and shared that opinion with him directly a few weeks ago. In addition, we've had two contractors experienced in working in historic preservation neighborhoods come out and inspect this house, and their quotes for repairing this house reflect the fact that redoing the work on this house required disassembling it piece by piece, brick by brick, and evaluating each piece to determine if it can be included in the rebuilt structure, which means that what's going to end up in the end is a facsimile of the original building that retains little, if any, of the historic value. And as you might imagine, the cost of doing that would be astronomical. The quotes we got were for two hundred and sixty dollars per square foot, which is more than four times the cost, the average sale price of houses in this neighborhood over the past few years. It's just not reasonable to do this. And furthermore, the building inspector inspected this house in September of two thousand and thirteen and began the process of declaring it dilapidated. This was prior to the time that we purchased the house, and we just learned this a few weeks ago with Councilman Shadid. I did not, we did not know this at the time, but this house has not deteriorated past, during, sorry, this house has not deteriorated anymore while we've owned it. It was already in the process of being declared dilapidated before we even bought it. We have not contributed to the state of this house beyond the fact that it's been sitting unoccupied. All right? So in addition to all these professional opinions, we've also gone out and talked to many of the neighborhood members and asked them what their thoughts are. And every single member of our neighborhood that we met with in the immediate vicinity of the house has signed a letter to Councilman Shadid saying they do not oppose the demolition of this house, and many of them have also written letters to the council attesting that as well. We knew this house had issues when we went into it. We knew this, but we took on the challenges associated with this house because we want to be a part of the Jefferson Park community. We're, this is the only house that we own. It's the first house that my wife and I ever bought together, and we want to be a part of this neighborhood. We want to contribute to this community. And to that end, we've invested two years of our lives into realizing that goal, and we know that to the points that have already been raised by the different council members, by Councilman Shadid and Councilman Sawyer earlier, about the process for having these houses approved. Any house that we build would have to go before the Historic Preservation Council and be consistent with this bungalow style of houses in the neighborhood that we value. That's the whole reason why we bought here, is we like this neighborhood, we like the style of houses, we want to be a part of it, and we want to build a structure and invest in this neighborhood to be a part of it in the future and contribute to the historic character of it. I know I've gone a little over on time.
Yeah.
But I thank you, thank you all very much for your consideration of this issue, and if you have questions on things, I'd be more than happy to address them.
I do. Let me, let me ask. When you saw it and you were thinking about buying it, and the process of buying it, I understood, took like nine months. Did you do any inspections or structural studies prior to closing?
We did not. We toured the house, but we did not have a structural engineer come in and review the house prior to it.
Did you have a real estate attorney helping you through that nine-month process of closing that was advising you about buying a house in a historic neighborhood?
His advice was not specific to issues relating to the historic nature of the neighborhood. The house, when we bought it, was, had some serious title issues, and that was the source of the nine months of time that we spent trying to track down the previous owner and get clear title on the house, and that was the primary advice that he was giving us regarding the property.
But you, you had access to a real estate attorney who was helping you through the title work in a historic neighborhood?
His expertise was in real property, not necessarily of a historic nature.
Okay. How, how long after you bought it did you begin movement towards demolition?
Starting shortly after we purchased the house in February two thousand and fourteen, we began the process of bringing structural engineers out to inspect the house. I think Laurent visited in March, and Carissa Ramming visited in April, I believe. So we had two engineers out who both went out and performed detailed inspections of it, and, and their conclusion was unanimous and definitive, that there was, this property could not be saved.
So why, why not do that structural study before you bought it?
At the time, we felt that the challenge of the, we knew there was going to be some challenges in rehabilitation of the house, but the work that we put in towards clearing the title and our sort of relationship with the owners of the house led us to believe that it was worth the challenge of trying to take this on and looking at those things afterwards, because we were very excited to be a part of the neighborhood. We really liked this area. It's a beautiful lot. It's facing the park, and as Lauren has already alluded to, they're doing a whole bunch of really nice things in the park to beautify this area, and so we were willing to take, take on a challenge.
I mean, if I, if I was going to buy a house and I knew that I had to renovate it, it, I would have, the purchase price would be part of my calculation, and then I think I would want some estimate of what it would cost me to renovate it. So I, I personally would get inspections and structural studies before I closed. I, I think you know that the, the counter opinion is that this was never bought to renovate it, that the purpose was to buy it for some forty thousand dollars, a very, a lot that's across from a park, and so the lot itself is probably worth forty thousand dollars or more, but that if somebody were to come in and, and not do any inspections or structural studies before they close, and then immediately after they close start moving towards demolition, that the, the intent was always to buy it in order to demolish it.
I, I understand that, and I, and I would not try to deceive you and say that it wasn't something that we'd consider, had not considered prior to it. We considered all paths forward for the property, and, and as I've pointed out, you know, my wife and I do, part of the reason why we bought in this neighborhood is because we do appreciate historic value, the historic value of this house, as I've pointed out. I've, I've lived in them all my life. I, I, I really do value them a lot, and so I, I encourage the council to take that consideration very seriously, but this is, is, as, as we know, the city was in the process of wanting to declare this house dilapidated long before we bought it. And so this has been a known issue in the city for some time, and we put a huge effort forth to try to resolve these issues with the title at great expense beyond the forty thousand dollars that we paid in purchase price for the house, to try to get those issues resolved at a point when no one prior to that had really stepped up to try to do anything with this house, as it had sat unoccupied for a long period of time. And, you know, I think, I, as I said, I would not deny that we had had that as an option on the table, but we'd hoped that that was not necessarily the route we would take. But whenever I am in a situation where I'm not an expert on something, and I profess no expertise in structures or building, my wife is an architect, but I'm just professor crazy stuff, but stuff unrelated to this, that I'm going to defer to expertise, and I have, feel like we've consulted a sufficient number of experts in this area, that I feel quite confident that this is the right path forward for this house.
When I talked to the president of the Neighborhood Association, he indicated that he toured it with you early, and there was a hole in the roof that would allow rain to enter. Was it, was there an attempt made to repair the roof and, and stop water from entering the?
That was, without the time we inspected the house, or had our structural engineers come out, we went around and tried to do some repairs to some of those areas in the house, but as you know, in a historic preservation neighborhood, there's, there's great limitations on what we can do without certificates of appropriateness, and so we can put stopgap measures in, but we really can't do anything major until we have a CA from, from Historic Preservation to do any serious work on the house, and we were reluctant to invest substantial amounts of money in a house that everyone is telling us should be torn down.
If you have a, I mean, if you have a hole in the roof that allows rainwater to enter the house, I mean, surely you could get that repaired. I mean, nobody's going to object to that, right?
My experience is that HP is quite, quite particular about any sort of work being done on houses. And anything that is done is, requires a certificate of appropriateness, from my, from my knowledge of that. So as I said, we can do stopgap measures, small things, putting a tarp up, things like that, but you can't do anything serious to replace the roof until you get, go through the, the process of getting a CA, which is quite lengthy.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Thank you.
Shannon Rundell?
Shannon Rundell, four thirty-one Northwest Twentieth, representing the Historic Preservation Alliance, which is the historic preservation districts who have formed a group to work together on common issues, and we, of course, would like this denied. There's so much to visit about here. First of all, thank Ed and Pete. I about cried when you stood up for a few more bleeding hearts on some of the commissions, but I appreciate you all. I too have a long memory, Pete, and remember having my daughter's ninth birthday party in Sparrow Park. I've lived south of Fiftieth for forty years, and live in Heritage Hills now, have been on HP Commission, and I believe, the truth is, that the HP Commission is being misrepresented by this person who says you can't put a roof on if you have an active leak. I think it's an administrative approval. I believe that that wouldn't even have had to go to the commission for him to put a roof on this house, with notice to Katie Fredle, the HP officer. The HP Commission did tour this house, and they say it can be saved. We've all seen a lot of houses saved. The price that he paid for this house is about half of what people are paying for vacant lots in these inner-city neighborhoods. Thanks to a lot that you all have done downtown, and thanks to, I think, a lot of us for being involved with the city for many years, our downtown neighborhoods are thriving. I think that he picked up a lot real cheap, and there is in the HP Commission meeting notes, and I don't have it, it's well over a year ago, when they first came to HP wanting to demolish this house, there is an engineering report by a licensed structural engineer that did go into the property at their invitation, and then they claimed that they didn't give him permission, but it is a licensed structural engineering report that says this house can be saved, and the people that have looked at it more recently say it can be saved. We're very concerned if this starts setting a precedent in our neighborhoods. This location makes this house very notable nationwide. The bungalow neighborhoods were unique at the time they were built, and in the national register application for Jefferson Park, this area with bungalows surrounding, it's notable across the country. This is, we've all, as we say, Lauren Capron, thank you for coming. He has seen many saved in far worse shape. So that, I would just like it to be denied because I think it can be saved, and they can probably turn a profit on what they've got in it if they want to not take the renovation on. Thank you.
Marva Ellard?
Jefferson Park could buy that house.
Thank you, Lauren.
Marva Ellard, fifteen twenty-one North Char-Tel. As our city manager, Jim Couch, said, yes, I'm one of those, I'll, I'll say it, crazy people who take on these projects from time. You didn't call me crazy. I didn't say you did. I said, I said that. And I think there would have been times if I would have come before council between nineteen ninety-seven and two thousand and six and said, I think I've taken on too much with the Seber, and maybe I need to sell it or tear it down. Those of you who were on council then probably would have said, well, we, we understand that, but I think this is a situation where people are trying to manipulate our ordinances, and I don't think we want to see this pursued. Some of the statements made are just not accurate. Blue tarps are readily available and easy to install on a roof. If you have a hole in your roof, I don't think anybody in town's going to stop you from doing that. The bamboo's not been trimmed, the trees haven't been trimmed. No effort's been made to make this house look better or stabilize it in any fashion. I worked with Deborah on a project at an architect's office, and she told me that she and her husband were real excited about a house they were buying, and that they planned on tearing it down and building a new house. At that time, I didn't know where the house was. I didn't know where the house was until they applied for demolition in front of the HP Commission well over a year ago. There's one outstanding property maintenance citation on this house. Is that right, Charles?
I don't know how many are outstanding. There have been several, several that have been issued over the last seven years.
But to this owner, there's one outstanding, as far as my research shows. So we go from one outstanding citation, and today it's being considered for demolition. I think there's a gap in the process that we need to look at. Houses shouldn't go from property maintenance issues to demolition without working the property maintenance aspect of it. These houses are too important to our HP districts. People buy in HP districts because they think the ordinance is going to protect them and improve things like this. I can give you a list of addresses we could go look at. Nine oh-one Northwest Nineteenth is one. A house in Mesa that we all were afraid was going to fall down. It has new owners, you know, so this house deserves a chance, and I think it needs to go through the process of property maintenance before we consider tearing it down.
Okay. Thanks for coming down. Ed, I think the ball's in your court if you want to do something different.
I mean, I definitely would look to guidance from Meg and anybody else, but I, I have fear, I, I don't think you can look at this just in a silo, just at twenty-nine-hundred North Harvey Parkway. I'm, I'm nervous about what's happening in Ward Two. Some of it's not in historic preserve, districts, but there's clearly people buying houses to demolish them for surface parking lots or other. But in historic districts, I'm, I'm nervous about the precedent that would be set when the city's apparatus for demolishing dilapidated buildings gets used against us, when it, when, when it, when it gets used to help facilitate delimit, demolition in a historic district. The HP Commission basically saw it the same way. They felt that this contributed to the historic nature. They felt like the owners had contributed to its further dilapidation, and that that should not be rewarded. Allowing something to dilapidate further should not be rewarded economically by allowing it to be demolished. The applicant is, one of them is an architect. I mean, they have knowledge of real estate development and structure. They had an attorney. They did no studies prior to buying it, which to me, someone would do if they, if they had any thought of, of renovating it. If there was any neighborhood in the city of Oklahoma City that you would be hesitant to demolish, it would be Jefferson Park because it has the city's most successful Chodo program, where the Neighborhood Association, through its Chodo program, is taking these houses, renovating them, and then putting them back on the market, and they've done it over and over and over. So if there was any neighborhood in the city that, that should rise to a higher standard, it would be Jefferson Park. Meg, do you have other thoughts or?
Well, Ed, I do, and you know, this is a complicated case.
Yeah.
As we can see, the pictures are terrible, and, but I, I really lean to the concern about precedents. This is not the only property that's been to, you know, been neglected and has been torn down. It's happened in the past. This is a really significant house, and, you know, years ago, I lived on Harvey Parkway, just a few blocks out of this. Sparrow Park is a very unique environment. I respect the engineers that wrote these reports, both of them. I know them personally, and I, I'm certain they're correct, but we've seen worse structures saved, and I guess, I'm afraid that I fall, you know, to some extent, on the side of thinking this property was purchased with full knowledge that it was in an HP district and has been allowed to continue to deteriorate and probably can be saved. The other side of the argument, and you can almost go there as well, is that it looks like a public safety issue, and at some level, this council has to be concerned about the public safety, and so it's tough. I think if I understand there are two structures, and I'd get clarity, maybe even from the neighbors on this, I understand there's a house and a garage.
That would be correct.
In my discussions, the neighborhood wasn't as concerned about the garage, and maybe we separate these two, bifurcate these two things, and allow the garage to come down.
The garage is probably the safer structure of the two.
Well, there you go. There was my argument. So I don't know how you want to handle that, but I, but I think, I believe I am aware that there are folks that would be willing to step up and take this project on, and I'd rather see it taken on than I would see the house demolished.
And I agree. If there's any other comments, I mean, I, I'm inclined to vote against demolition, or at a minimum, continuing it for thirty days to see, you know, if, if there's any negotiations that want to take place. I do think that there are, there are, I forgot what you called it, James, but there, there are economic, motivated developers who would buy this. motivated developers who would buy this, where they could turn, the present owners could realize a significant return on investment, and it could be saved. If we vote today, I would vote against it. If we want to continue it for 30 days.
Continue it for 30 days. Give them the process a chance to work. What happens?
Okay. Does that seem reasonable?
It'd be November 10.
Okay.
Four weeks.
Four weeks. Okay. So I'll move to continue this for four weeks.
I have a question with the, Bob. I have a question with the dilapidated, just because when I'm talking about normal dilapidated, I mean, clearly, if this was something that was in a normal, not historic preservation district, I mean, we wouldn't even, we wouldn't even bat an eye on leaving it on, on leaving it dilapidated. And so is there a different set of criteria that we have to follow in historic preservation?
James, I think there are. When they're in a historic preservation district, the HP Commission is required to weigh in and deliver a report to us.
Uh huh.
That says whether or not the property is contributing or not. And they have weighed in and said the property is contributing to the neighborhood, and they recommend, they recommended denial. So that is part of our process in historic neighborhoods.
That property is contributing. Okay.
Question on the safety issue. Is this property the way to, forget where it's located in HP, is it a safety issue as we sit here today?
Yes, it is. It's in danger of collapse. The danger to the roof, they, it's had significant collapsing. The foundation is in really bad shape, as you can see from the pictures. It's cracked, it's buckled in places. The ceiling has collapsed in a lot of the rooms. It does have a significant danger of collapse to it.
Then, what is the impact that it's in a historic preservation neighborhood? How does that trump or not trump the fact that we have an unsafe property here?
It doesn't trump the city council. That's why it's before you. And you still have the discretion to decide that the city is going to demolish the structure or to pass this resolution, which orders the owner to demolish it, or the city will do it if the owner does not do it. So if you decide not to pass the resolution, then the city will not be proceeding with its own possible demolition. And for the owner to be able to demolish it, they would need to get a CA from the HP Commission.
So that was my question. So the property owner cannot demolish it as it is?
Not without a CA.
Okay.
As I understand it, the only person that can demolish it without a CA is the city.
I think this makes, the situation makes the point that Ed raised. It's a situation where our own ordinances are being used against us. I mean, that's the dilemma. But I think we just have to come down on the side of what we think's right. It's obviously a safety issue. You can look at it and tell it is. But is it a safety issue that was generated for the purpose of demolishing it from the very beginning? And I think that's pretty evident from whatever we've heard, that that's what happens.
I think that it's been in this state for quite a while, I mean, a year and a half. If we were going to demolish it, it wouldn't have to be done until November 13th. So I think delaying 30 days and trying to figure this out is, I don't think it makes that much difference, and then we can go from there.
Okay. I'll take that as a motion to defer item 9LA for 28 days for four weeks until that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. We're voting on that item only. Cast your votes. So that item is deferred for weeks. Now, is there a motion on the rest of item 9I1, which include B, C, and D?
Just to point out that item C has been deferred.
And B was deferred as well?
Okay. So only D then?
And has anybody signed up to speak on D or?
All right. Cast your votes. So item D passes unanimously.